Welcome to the Neighborhood Housing and Development Subcommittee. Thank you all for joining us this morning. We'll begin with a call to order and review of the minutes from our November meeting. Any of my colleagues had a chance to review the meeting minutes?
I have, and I'll make the motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you. We have a consent agenda. We know presentations are planned, but staff is available for questions on our contracts related to asbestos and lead paint consulting services. If no one has any questions, would it entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda of that one item?
I move the consent agenda request for qualifications on on-call asbestos and lead-based paint consulting services.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. We have several informational write-ups in the packet. Next month will be graffiti Free Phoenix Awareness Month, and this committee's been very involved with working with citizens to reduce graffiti in the community. There's also movement at the state, at the League of Cities, to have our fellow cities join us in fighting graffiti, so some good news in that packet. And then Councilwoman Pastor had asked for Parkly Apartments to be on the agenda, so I will turn to her about number five.
So could we have a presentation on Parkly Apartments?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Subcommittee. Parkly Apartments, this is an information update. We spent lots of time and money on Parkly Apartments. It's a 523-unit multifamily community built in 1955, about 33 acres and 34 two-story buildings. It's right in the heart of Phoenix and near the light rail. And when we bought it, I believe it was about 10 years ago, or, I'm sorry, not 10 years ago, in 2009, the city bought it as a result of lots of crime and vacancies there. I think only maybe 20% of the units were occupied at the time. There was heavy crime, and the neighborhood needed a cleanup in general. So the city bought it and put about $10 million of neighborhood stabilization funds into it, and some CDBG and some home funds, and basically cleaned up the entire 33-acre complex. It is now almost 90, last time I checked, it was about 98% full. So it's a very, very successful neighborhood cleanup and very successful affordable property. There are market rate, which what we call market rate, about 120% of area median income, there are a few units that are market rate, and there are waiting lists for those all the time. So it is a very desirable location to live because it's so near the light rail, and because of the look of the property with the lovely grounds, park-like atmosphere, and kind of historic features, it's very desirable for market rate and affordable. So it's a good success story with Neighborhood Stabilization Home and CDBG, very good partnership, City Housing and Neighborhood Services Department.
Thank you. I just wanted to know, I really wanted to know where we were on the occupancy, only because I travel that area often and watch it and pay attention, so I wanted an update. So thank you.
May I ask some questions? This is where I'm from, Parkly, then. This is before your time, though, too, Cindy. And you may not have all the numbers, but what was the acquisition cost? I'd like to know all the money that was pumped into that Parkly apartment since then, including the operational, and separate the operational.
I do know that we spent $10.4 million in Neighborhood Stabilization Program funds and Housing Department's Affordable Housing Program funds. I'm not sure about those.
I have staff in the room. Do we know the acquisition costs?
About $5 million for the acquisition.
And then, were there additional dollars, or is that all that was put into that project?
I believe that was all that was put into that project.
And then, there were some rehabilitation dollars. Is that included in the 10.4?
Yeah, the 10.4 include Neighborhood Stabilization Program funds, Housing Department's Affordable Housing Program funds.
But what was it for? To do what? Yeah, you can get back with me.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
What I'd like to do, if possible, on the Parkly, just if you could provide me all the funding that went into it and what the operational is on that, since we've acquired it.
We can do that.
Yeah. It'll give us an idea. Thank you.
And maybe we could also get data on what were the costs to the community in terms of the police and the vacancy as well.
And, I'm just thinking. So in that also, I would like to know the dynamics before we went in to rehab that area, and what it looked like, and basically, kind of, the crime rate of the area, and now what it looks like. Because it has changed that area tremendously and the neighborhood around it. So I would like, I'm very curious to see the dynamics of when we invest in the community and when we invest in an area, how the area changes.
So, Madam Chair and members of the Subcommittee, a couple of things I can say. We did rehabilitate, we did remodel the interiors of most of the buildings, and so that was where most of the money was spent, to bring those interiors up to modernization levels for occupancy. We also brought the crime rate down low enough to use a building that was previously a police substation on the premises because of the high rate of crime. We are transferring it into a head-start facility that should be opening fairly soon. So I think that kind of tells the story, but I can come back next month with a deeper story of the entire program from start to finish.
That would be wonderful. That's certainly a huge success story if we had to have a whole substation, and now we have a success story that we've stabilized. That's probably saving the taxpayers a lot of money that we don't have that crime and high vacancy rate. Always good to have good news. All right. I think that concludes Parkly, and we will let you stay up for the HUD Rental Assistance Demonstration Program, which is an exciting one for District 8, which is home to many of our city housing properties.
Waiting for my presentation to come up. So the Rental Assistance Demonstration Program is a fairly new program that was created by HUD to assist public housing authorities nationwide to redevelop aged public housing into more sustainable Section 8 rental assistance units, which is why it's called Rental Assistance Demonstration, or RAD. Currently in Phoenix, we have over 2,000 residents in about 815 units of aged and obsolete public housing. These properties were built in the 1940s and 60s, and they have obsolete systems, electrical plumbing systems, things like that, obsolete floor plans. They don't, they lack amenities that traditional families need in these days and times, and they have suffered for years of deferred maintenance and lowered operating subsidy and capital costs from HUD. So basically, they are in need of redevelopment. The RAD program is HUD's, central to HUD's strategy of preserving affordable housing by converting it to a more sustainable platform and allowing public housing authorities to leverage private and public debt in order to redevelop public housing into something more sustainable. So you see up there, what RAD does is converts public housing units into Section 8 project-based vouchers, which then brings you in a guaranteed amount of income, and you get to run the new development like, more like the private sector, where you have guaranteed income, you can create a budget for staffing and for operating costs, and also for capital improvements, versus waiting on HUD and public housing. HUD just gives us an operating subsidy, and it gets cut year after year because their budget is being cut. So it's a much more sustainable platform to operate affordable housing. RAD can be used for remodeling or redevelopment, complete redevelopment. So we have the choice. What we'll do is a needs assessment on every property that we're going to apply for, and based on that needs assessment, determine whether we want to remodel or redevelop the entire property. What we'll do, once we get approval for the RAD units that we apply for, we will have to make a deal, financing deal, and figure out how to fund whatever we're going to do, either the remodel or the redevelopment. So we will come back to council with that deal on the individual properties that are approved. The proposed properties are Foothills Village, which is down on 7th Avenue and Southern, Ale Crone East, which is at 14th and Monroe, about 38 units there, Ale Crone, Frank Luke Homes, and Sidney P. Osborne, which are 577 units over at 16th Street and Van Buren in that vicinity. Those three properties are part of the Choice Neighborhoods grant, planning grant that we're going to apply for, and we will get extra points in the planning grant if we have applied for RAD. So again, HUD is encouraging public housing authorities to apply for this program and convert their obsolete public housing into something more sustainable. So today, we're asking Neighborhood Housing and Development Subcommittee to recommend council approval for housing to apply for the HUD RAD program to revitalize 815 units in five multifamily rental properties within the city's public housing portfolio and implement the RAD program if approved by HUD.
Wonderful, thank you. We've been hearing from a lot of the residents that they love their communities, their students, their kids want to stay in their elementary school, but it's time to do a facelift. So they don't want to be moved out of their home, but they do need reinvestment. So thank you for looking for a funding source, because we have great District 8 residents who love their communities but are ready for an upgrade.
Yes.
Any questions?
Just, all we're doing here is just putting the application in to try to get the funding, which I'm good with, because we haven't, we're not going to be able to do the needs assessment on each of the properties until we're further down the line, correct?
Yes, Madam Chair and Councilwoman DeCicio, we are, we have actually started needs assessments on the Choice Neighborhoods properties as part of the planning grant, and we will do needs assessments also on the other two properties. And again, that will determine where, how we go forward with RAD, whether it's a remodel or redevelopment, and then we will have to consider how we fund it. So we will be back with those deals.
And then, when you move to Section 8 housing, Section 8 vouchers, which I like better, because it basically gives the individual the choice of where they want to live. All this does is it moves a property into a Section 8 ability, to be able to take the voucher, correct?
It's actually a project-based Section 8 voucher, so the voucher stays with the property.
Okay.
And after a certain time period, it depends on how we work the deal, a year or 18 months, the folks, the residents can take that Section 8 voucher and move somewhere else with their Section 8 voucher, and then that, the other voucher stays with the property, so someone else can move in.
Over a period of time, they can take it.
Yes.
When you find out those numbers, could you just let me know? I mean, when the individual has the choice to be able to move, so that they can pick and choose where they want to live.
Yes, Madam Chair and Councilwoman DeCicio, the, it will depend on the deal that we work on that specific property and how we outline it in the deal. So when I bring it back to you for redevelopment, we can talk about at that point what we determine to be the length of time those Section 8 voucher tenants have to stay before they can port out or take their voucher elsewhere.
And then, my preference will always be to give them the choice to be able to go anywhere they want, the sooner the better.
Okay.
They make those choices.
Okay.
Right, thanks.
As you're creating or writing the deal, are there limitations by the feds that it has three months, two months? Is there any limitation? Well, we can discuss it then also, but I'm just wondering what the boundaries are.
It's generally a minimum of a year.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Wonderful. Would entertain a motion.
So move, I'm off my notes. Move the staff recommendation of HUD Rental Assistance Demonstration RAD program.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Passes unanimously. Thank you. We will next move on to real estate market demand study consultants, so more work on sustainable housing in Phoenix. We have a theme today, and this one's exciting. We have several city-owned properties and moving forward with redevelopment.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee. I'm Chris Hallett, Director of Neighborhood Services Department, joining Cindy Stotler, the Housing Director. Both our departments have come to acquire a number of properties in each of our respective redevelopment areas, and have owned these for quite some time, and look to solicit a market study to help us define how we use our scarce redevelopment areas in redevelopment-ing these areas. Staff would recommend, would like to solicit a real estate market consulting firm that can help us identify current housing and commercial trends, collect baseline data, create short and long-term strategies and plans, and formulate policy recommendations, which we'd like to bring back to the Subcommittee. The areas in redevelopment areas we have, up in the north, Village Center is a neighborhood initiative area, redevelopment area that the Neighborhood Services Department works in, it's up in Village Center, central to 7th Street, south of Dunlap to the canal, and the vast majority, the rest of them are down in the central or southern part of the city. We have Garfield to east of downtown, everybody should be very familiar with. Isaac is a small redevelopment area. We have north of I-10 between 31st and 35th Avenue, it's a McDowell. Hope 6 redevelopment area is located south, and the Central City South area near the Matthew Henson redevelopment project. And the largest one is Target Area B, down between 7th Avenue and 24th Street, south of the River Bottom. We proposed upon approval today, and council approved in early February, we released the RFP later in February, with a due date in March, with the evaluations in April, and recommendations in May, which we'd come back Subcommittee in May, and then on to council for approval in June. That would allow us to enter into contract with the market, the consultants, to get their studies underway, hopefully yielding recommendations that will help us prioritize. Again, we have very limited resources. Each of these areas are different in respect to their markets and readiness to market to develop, so these analysis will help each of us in prioritizing our resources to these areas, minimizing the cost of city investment while the market comes up. Right now, the market is, nobody's investing in these areas. A lot of what we do with our federal grants is seed money to start the development, help start bringing the property values up, creating jobs, synergy in the area, property values and tax collections, and then private investment sends to follow that. So that's the ultimate goal with these. So we request the Subcommittee recommends city council approval to issue the RFP for real estate market consulting firms to conduct a comprehensive real estate market area demand study for neighborhood services and housing, strategic redevelopment areas, and neighborhood initiative areas.
Thank you for that update. And we were hearing, particularly in the Garfield area, a lot of interest from community leaders, and they also asked us to look at, there's an infill incentive district right now, where we don't have a lot of infill incentives any longer to offer, so if we could look at maybe updating the zoning as we move forward with changes in the community as well. Any questions from my colleagues? Councilman?
I'll be supportive. One of the ideas, I mean, is one of the ideas probably find a way to partner with someone in the private sector to build some of the housing, and then partner with them somehow? Is that one of the ideas you guys are looking to do, I assume, or no, or it's okay if it's not?
Madam Chair, Councilman DeCicio, I know with ours, we came here earlier in the year for the South Phoenix Village infill. Any property a city owns in a redevelopment area require to put it out for disposition and development agreements. We generally do work to partner with, especially single-family infill, so we're working with Foundation for Senior Living Real Estate Services for our South Phoenix Village infill program right now. We would look to probably do the same. These are all single-family residential zoned at the moment. That's what we look to do for infill, along the lines with what the chair's recommended, so yes.
You really can't do much with it, because it's federally owned, I assume, these properties. There's only so much you can do, you're limited as to who you can work with, correct? Or do with it?
Madam Chair, Councilman DeCicio, yes. Federally funded programs that acquired these originally, we, again, we did them through blight elimination, neighborhood stabilization, affordable housing development efforts. The means to those answers to hopefully serve those at 80% area median income or lower. Some of the funds, depending on the funding in each of these property locations, can allow for some market development. So community development block grants in particular have to go to serve at least 51% or more that are for affordable development.
You may want to look at maybe some sort of, I know you're looking at nonprofits to partner with on that. You may also want to look at some private sector participation in there, too, other than just the nonprofits, and you can always strike some sort of development agreement, where they end up building it, they get X percent, city gets X percent out of that. You might find that your revenues or your ability to recover more dollars might be cheaper, and not cheaper, it might be better for you, if you part, if you open up that window a little larger, and allow more people to be able to compete for the partnership with us, and then you can maybe, I don't know enough about the federal rules, I just don't, you know, I have enough problems with learning what the rules are here, let alone what it is, what's happening with the federal government. But there may be some sort of development agreement you might be able to strike with the private sector that allow you to maximize your profits or your ability to recover dollars on there. You might be able to.
And I think we did do a development agreement with a private home builder who failed to perform in the past.
Madam Chair, Councilman DeCicio, yes. I mean, we've had that, it really depends what the federal funding on each particular property. I know for single-family infill, we required with CDBG to use a community-based development organization, so they have to meet the requirements of the HUD for that. But others you can use. In fact, we're using a combination private sector nonprofit for the South Phoenix Village contractor-developer scenario.
But this is not a privatization discussion, believe it or not. I'm just saying that right now, they're targeting only, my understanding, nonprofits. I'm saying if they open up that window a little larger, they might be able to accomplish the same goal, less costs, be able to maximize profits to the city, too.
But we have awarded to private for-profit entities in the past, and sometimes more successfully than others.
Madam Chair, Councilman DeCicio, certainly when we can, we do open it up to all available partners in accordance with the guidelines.
Just a thought, you know, just a way of maybe, finding a way to maybe restructure and look at an agreement that might be to the benefit of everybody.
Thank you for considering it.
All right. Looks like we're ready for a motion.
I recommend staff's request for an RFP for the real estate market consulting firm to conduct a comprehensive real estate market area demand study for NSD and housing.
Wow.
I'll second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. So we'll ask our Neighborhood Services Director to remain up here for the slum property update. This one's an exciting one for this group, because we worked together with staff to update the neighborhood preservation ordinance to address blighted properties in the city. When we came in, we did not have heat restrictions, and have worked to add that to our city's tools, so that we can keep people in healthy living environments, including during difficult weather situations.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, again, Chris Hallett, Neighborhood Services Director. I'm joined by Darcy Cover, Acting Deputy Director over Neighborhood Preservation Division, who is responsible for our code enforcement, as well as slum property designations. So yes, you are absolutely correct, Madam Chair. The slum property designation is governed by Section 39-42 of the Neighborhood Preservation Ordinance, for which we are charged to enforce, and it provides the authority to designate a residential rental property as a slum property pursuant to Arizona Revised Statute, Section 33-1901. That state statute defines slum property as residential rental property that is deteriorated or is in a state of disrepair, and manifests one or more conditions that are a danger to the health and safety of the public. It further defines the dangers of health and safety of the public, including, as depicted here, structurally unsound exterior surfaces, lack of safe rapid egress, hazardous electrical systems or gas connections, and lack of potable water or adequate sanitation facilities, and an accumulation of waste, corrosive liquids, flammable, or explosive materials. Now, we currently do not have any residential rental properties that are designated as slum property. The last known one was the Woodbridge Apartments, you all should be fairly familiar with. It was a four-year endeavor that our department, and actually the city, took on with regard to the ownership of the Woodbridge Apartments, located at, it's a 305-unit complex at 19th Avenue in Glendale. They pretty much snubbed their nose at the city as to having any real legal standing to be able to hold them into compliance. So in July of 2012, we issued 49 civil citations to them, that ultimately went through the court system and yielded $47,000 in fines. We knew that wasn't going to be enough to motivate them into, come into compliance, so we worked with our prosecutor's office and issued 406 criminal charges in August of 2012, under the state statute regarding the slum designation, and subsequently designated the property a slum designation in August of 2013. They since have appealed that twice, and to the Maricopa County Superior Court. But in combination of the $2.8 million in criminal fines that we got, and the slum designation, we were able to get the property into compliance as of March 2015, whereby in requirements of the state legislation, we had to remove the slum designation. So since then, we really haven't had the opportunity to designate any other. Certainly, there's a lot of aged housing stock that come in that have disrepair, similar to what we've seen here. However, each of the property owners in those cases have been willing to work with the city to come into compliance, so we haven't been able to take them to the next level of designation. Further, the most egregious of the sorts we've seen tends to come in the summertime with a lack of adequate air conditioning. So as a result, and with the leadership of the Subcommittee and the chair, we, and her ad hoc committee, we passed a temperature control standards in the city ordinance, the neighborhood preservation ordinance, that require minimum heating and cooling standards. These have worked adequately to address the most dire needs, the most of these typical slum properties, which is adequate cooling in particular in the summer. We're currently still doing education on that, because we just obtained, this ordinance change was just last April of 2015, so we're on a second wind of providing education to the multifamily industry as to the requirements of the heating and cooling requirements. This has proved very helpful for our enforcement with slumming properties. But that, that pretty much concludes our presentation on the efforts that we've done to date and continue to do. If there's any other direction that we'd like us to see in the area of slum properties, we'd be happy to hear about it.
Councilman?
Thank you. Chris, thank you so much for all the effort, and I want to thank your entire team for the effort and for the focus of this Subcommittee. The Woodbridge Apartments, it happens to be in District 5, and it was important to not only, well, frankly, not only me, it was important for everyone in this council. I think everyone agrees that slum lords are, shouldn't be operating in the city of Phoenix, as far as I'm concerned. It was an opportunity for us to put a shingle up, I mentioned this before, an opportunity for us to put a shingle up to let slum lords know that you are not welcome in this city. We can do without your investment. We are not, we don't want to do business with anyone who will take advantage of anyone, but certainly Phoenicians. And it was an uphill battle, and I remember just, you know, how much effort that took. I mean, I know in July of 2012, staff filed 49 civil charges, and we knew what we were up against, that the city knew that we were up, what we were up against, and at the end of the day, it actually turns into a great story. I remember walking through this property and seeing slab leaks, and people without electricity, obviously without, you know, air conditioning or heat, they have no electricity. An empty pool, pool fences broken, no lighting, I mean, it was just, I couldn't believe that this was in the United States of America, and certainly couldn't believe that this was happening in the city. And so I'm really proud of how staff responded, and how the Subcommittee responded, and the entire council responded. And I asked for the update just to keep this top of mind. First of all, again, keeping that shingle out there, letting slum lords know, letting these types of investors know that you're not welcome in the city of Phoenix. If this is, if this is your way of doing business, we'd rather not do business with you. And if you are doing business in the city of Phoenix this way, it won't be tolerated. That's incredibly important. There is a property that I don't mind telling you about right here on a televised Subcommittee, because frankly, it is an area that we certainly have to look at. It happens to be another District 5 location, but it's the Legends Villas West, near 69th Avenue and Indian School. I will say that there have been some improvements in the area, but a lot of the improvements have to do with, you know, again, city staff really coming together, our police department patrolling more in this particular location. City staff has done a good job of responding when, when things have been reported, and I want to give a lot of credit to the people who've lived in this particular area, because they are doing these great cleanup events, they do them regularly, their children are getting involved, but there's still an issue, again, walking through this property and seeing holes in the roofs of some of these units. Again, I'll tell you, and I believe the pool fence has been secured since, I've seen this, but the pool area, look. has been secured since, I've seen this, but the pool area looked very much like Woodbridge. Again, no electricity, empty pool, the fence is broken, those kinds of things, just they have a way of inviting crime. And there are some, obviously some families who live in the area. So I do want, I'm asking that staff would take a look at that particular location. Of course, I would, you know, we'll continue the briefings. I would like to have a briefing personally as we continue to move forward, making a multifaceted approach, multi-department approach, and how we deal with it, much like we did with the Woodbridge Apartments. I would appreciate it.
Madam Chair, Vice Mayor, we are familiar with the property. This is probably the next level of hanging our shingle that you'd like, that we'd like to be able to do. I think word got out on Woodbridge, which is a single-owner apartment complex, although it had been subdivided for condominium over the years, made it a little difficult to enforce. I believe Villa Legends West as well as other properties, yes, in West Phoenix in particular, have gone between apartments to condos and either going back or forth. And I know when these two particular properties you're both interested in have multiple owners, so it's not one apartment complex, which is a lot easier to hold under the state statute, state statute only on rental properties. So somebody can be owners of some of those properties, but they're still responsible for common area, which is a lot of what you see the slum designation touch upon, is those external hazards that we depicted in the property. So we still have to figure out how to work with HOAs when they become an ownership. Defunct HOAs is a whole nother level of how do we work on these. So where we, I think, made headway on the rental of a single-family rental property, one stepped up the continuum is a multi-owned, multi-family complex such as the one you just suggested, bless you. How do we tack those? How do we hang that shingle? And how do we best address those? And it will take a multifaceted, multi-departmental approach again.
Absolutely. Well, I agree. Again, going back to the Woodbridge case, that's exactly what we're facing. It was a challenge. You know, I believe there was an owner out of California who we felt, or I'll tell you, I felt, who's more willing in just paying the fines than actually fixing the problem because it was a business decision. And how do you deal with something like that? And, you know, 49 charges resulting in $47,000 in fines, and then, of course, 406 criminal charges resulting in more than $2.8 million in fines. It was challenging, but the city of Phoenix wrapped its arms around it. And with this multi-department approach and calling more partners to the fight, if you will, or, you know, it all worked out. Legends Villas West does pose different challenges because it is several owners. That just tells me that that's another challenge, another hurdle for us to get by, but we will, you know, we'll definitely do it. There may be several reasons on why, why, well, I'm not saying that we wouldn't want to, but there are several reasons why one would not want to take on that battle. We got to find that one reason why we will. And all you have to do is walk the property, and you see these children, you see these families who are working very hard, doing all they possibly can to play by the rules. Again, when this property is cleaned up, it's because they decide to clean it up. You know, they are spearheading this great neighborhood cleanup event. And of course, I'm really, again, I'm proud of our city staff and, Chris, your department, because, you know, that's where the tools are coming from. And a lot of the volunteerism is just happening there. So the right thing is happening from grassroots level. But at the end of the day, you know, if there are laws being broken there, then people are going to have to deal with that. So it sounds like we're on the same page.
So as we, as you said, stated, in dealing with the one owner, but the challenges we have, or the challenges I'm sure many of us have within our district, is that when it's a property where there's multiple owners, and how do we then go about organizing that property and going after the property? That is one of the challenges that I have right now. Luckily, the renters, they're not necessarily, and some owners who live in that area organize themselves. And with NHD and the police department and many other departments, we have been able to organize now the owners or send fines to the owners to have them realize what that property looks like or what their property looks like, and it's not okay to rent that way. But the challenge is for all of us is putting those efforts into play because it's time-consuming, and it's also time-consuming in the sense of finding out who the property owners are and looking for them. And so the amount of hours that we have to put in these areas is definitely worth it, but for people watching to understand, it's a huge effort in doing it and getting it to where we need to get to. So anybody, I am asking anybody in the public that would like to volunteer in my office to do all this research to help us get more slum lords out of the way, it would be great. So if you're, please call my office for that. But, and in a particular area that we're looking for homeowners right now. My question is about homes. Homes that are, they're designated homes, but they're renting out each room, and the property's not necessarily up to par. Do we have any existing ordinances or codes to then go after some of these homes in these areas? I have one in particular that I'm thinking of that we're watching and doing, but because I'm not sure where the ordinances are in order to go after this particular home.
Madam Chair, Councilwoman Pastor, are you talking about a single-family home?
I'm talking about a single-family home that rents out rooms along the light rail. And...
So we talked about a multifaceted approach, and once you have more than one owner, certainly even one owner, we look to educate and gain compliance. So we continue to work with that at both locations that you each have in your respective districts, because you want to educate them. These are often the most vulnerable populations that are being underserved. These are extremely affordable rates, but yet the owners don't tend to invest in the properties. So how do we protect them on any incidents? Number one is getting the word out. Any tenant needs to be able to call in if they have a landlord-tenant issue. They need to be well-versed and educated in landlord-tenant law. They can call our number 602-534-4444 to set up appointment to get that advice. Certainly, if there's issues of any rental property on a landlord-tenant relationship, they can call it in. We start a five-day notice in accordance with the law. They don't do, if the landlord doesn't come into compliance or make good on the remedy, then we have code enforcement inspections that we can schedule up. I don't believe we're prohibited, whether it's a single-family or multi-family. So certainly, it's the education of the process, whether it's multi-owners on a multi-family, their responsibility, HOA, or a single-family landlord as well.
Okay. Thank you.
So maybe you can speak a little bit more about the distinguish, the difference in the ordinance between multifamily properties and single-family properties?
Please.
We talked, like the staff report talks about, we amended the neighborhood preservation ordinance to address multifamily properties on temperature control.
Right. I believe it's, any rental unit it addresses. So I believe if you had a single-family home that was renting out rooms, they would still have to abide by the standard. It's really for any rental unit. It's not just multifamily properties.
Wonderful. Because that actually just caught my attention that I'd said multifamily, we'd amended it for, but this would cover...
Yeah, Madam Chair, I think we broad-brushed it with multifamily. I think the ordinance itself, I looked it up the other day, does say rental unit.
Great. Can you talk a little bit about the education we've been doing? I think a lot of people had assumed we'd always had temperature standards, and so that the change maybe catches some people by surprise or some people.
Yes, Madam Chair. Certainly, we changed the ordinance, and then it's incumbent upon us to try and reach out. It's a hard population to serve, multifamily or rental. You won't know who rents a property at a room of a house or various different. So we're working with many of the industry, Arizona Multifamily Association. They generally serve a higher level of customers, so trying to find those Class C and D rental properties can be challenging, but we're looking for means to better reach out to them, apartments.com, any of the number of different venues. We're really looking to push, starting now through this next summer.
Wonderful. And bilingual, I think, media outreach probably makes a lot of sense as well.
Yes, absolutely.
Even more languages than by.
We, Madam Chair, to that point, we do have a landlord-tenant educational forum that we do quarterly. We do have available in various different languages, and we will definitely incorporate it into that, because it's really the renters who need to know this to hold the landlords accountable. We certainly want to educate the landlords as well. We can work with housing, and there's Section 8 landlords, and everybody else who is in a landlord capacity to know it as a responsibility of a landlord. Certainly, we want to get the education out to the tenants as well.
So with Section 8 landlords, we probably have a better list of those individuals. Have we sent information to them about the changes to the neighborhood preservation?
Not yet. I think that's one of our next steps that we wanted to be able to approach.
Wonderful. I think that would be very helpful for, and you did just give the council an update, that we've done thousands of counseling sessions with our landlord-tenant counseling program in the past year. So those individuals did get this information?
I will double-check if it's been included in that or not. It certainly will be added if it hasn't been.
Fabulous. As summer hits in Phoenix, that is a life safety issue for our residents. And so very glad with my colleagues' support that we move forward in making that change. Councilman DeCecio?
Just a couple of quick things if I could. One, going to Councilwoman Pastors, we do have an ordinance, don't we, that limits the amount of families that live in any particular dwelling, whether it's rental or not, don't we? I thought we could only have a certain amount of families that would live in one house or one dwelling unit.
Yes, I believe there's an ordinance that stipulates the number of unrelated family members who could live in a house.
So that would probably help Councilwoman Pastor in her issue there. The other, dealing with the volunteer in your office, you got Michael Hammitt back there. I see him. He might be able to assist you in getting a volunteer.
I'm creating a team.
You're creating a team? That could work. I'm afraid of that team. That is probably pretty good. The other, I want to give Chris and his staff a huge commendation for the work that they've done. I'm a big proponent of the broken window theory, where if you see a broken window, then it progressively gets worse. The idea is to get to these properties before they become slum properties. And that's always the biggest challenge, is how do you get to it first? And I think that you found what happened on Woodbridge, the minute you put out those criminal citations, they immediately started to come together. So if there's a way to kind of speed up that process, I think you might find it to your, it might make things a lot more efficient, and it might make things a lot easier too for the neighborhoods. Getting back again to what Councilwoman Pastor said about getting people motivated and volunteer, just to give you an example of what occurred in my district, because I also believe in that broken window theory, is you stop it before it gets bad. You've got to mobilize the public to do that. We had a situation like a golf course like you have in yours, where the developer came in, and, California developer, I don't know, it seems to be a commonality today, but it was a California developer came in, basically shut it down, and looking to extort concessions from the surrounding neighborhood. I mean, you know what's happening there. Make it look bad. But Chris's staff immediately got on it, it's the Lakes Golf Course, immediately got on it, and then literally just started jumping on it. So then, nothing had happened on our end, nothing, until that there was a complaint filed by the neighborhood, until they were going to go to the process. Then they came in and said, okay, we'll do all these things. And it was just basic cleanup. Now, because of Chris and his staff, they've been able to stay on top of it, and it's actually been cleaned up. The developer has just been interesting. I mean, they owe, you know, I don't know how they can buy a golf course and then still owe $1.3 million in back taxes that goes to education and all that stuff. But the other thing that they did, just to give you all an example of what occurred with the Lakes Golf Course, they ended up hiring the Village Planning Chair, who no longer is there, Penny knows, and we had to find a way to get him off quickly, like immediately, but he had already been hired on for two months and never notified anybody. Horrible situation of what happens with some of these slum lords. And essentially, it doesn't have to be a building, it could be a property too, where they allow that type of deterioration. But Chris and his team just really got all over it, and we were able to stop it before progressively got worse. It got bad. It could have been a lot worse. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I think this concludes the presentation. Any requests for upcoming agenda items? Councilman Gates had suggested that this committee look at marijuana regulations.
Oh, yes, yes.
And so we'll be moving forward with that. A lot of other cities have been making changes as the state is now allowing more movement among licensed dispensaries. So it'll be good for us to get that update. With that, I think we are adjourned.